Meeting of Wednesday, April twenty-third to order and we'll do the roll call.
Leanne Kashmarski, White Oak Drive.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Anthony Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Leonard Winslow is excused tonight and Jason McCarthy, planning and zoning administrator.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed minutes from the previous meeting of April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Move to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed public comment. Anyone wishing to come forth now to speak can do so, or if you're waiting for an agenda item, you can wait until that item comes up. See, no one will move on to six A and a new business, a public hearing. Number zero four, two, three, two, five, dash, one, a proposed indoor golf simulator fitness, land use on property located in the zone developmental district at four twenty Brickyard Road. The parcel ID is five, two, zero, eight, zero, one, eight, zero, one, six, zero, zero. Uh, let's see, the applicant is Ken Dillinger of U.P. Engineers and Architects, four twenty-four South Pine Street in Ishbaming, on behalf of the property owner, Adam Development LLC, one oh seven Superior View Lane in Nagani. Jason?
Yes, good evening. So if you remember last year, this is... Sorry now. Excuse me for one moment. Apologize, I'm... Oh, okay, that's weird. If you remember, uh, last year, this particular property at four twenty Brickyard Road was rezoned from rural residential to development district. Predicated upon a proposed development that you'll be entertaining tonight. This is a permitted use, the, um, if you can call it a fitness center slash retail space. And because it's adjacent to residential zoning and land use to the west, a public hearing is required. In case public has any comments or issues. We did send out letters to all of the surrounding neighbors within three hundred feet of the property. I did talk to, um, the abutting property owner who asked for a copy of the site plan and I did provide that so they're aware of it. I'm surprised that they're not here tonight, actually. But I did not receive any correspondence for or against the project, given those notifications. We also had, obviously, a notice in the newspaper and so it was publicized correctly. With that, I mean, there's really not a lot to do other than to hold the public hearing. Unless you guys want to provide anything else right now, but it's been fairly well-known, you know, what was proposed here, even at the time last year when the property was rezoned and then purchased by the applicant. So unless you have any questions for me, that would be an overview of the background on the project.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So last, at our last meeting, we were provided with this, which was the... This is the preliminary site plan for this?
It's the site plan that's being presented to you.
It's the site plan being presented.
Yep.
But I didn't, usually when there's a development like this, there's usually an engineer that gives us some input.
Yeah, they'll happily provide that during the
Oh, okay.
Site plan review. This is just for the land use itself.
Oh, I see, okay.
Site plan's coming up.
Plan is B.
Okay, thank you.
It's all in your packet.
Any other questions for Jason? Okay. Uh, hearing none then, I guess we can open up the public hearing at seven oh five. Anyone wishing to come forth may do so now. I guess if you want to come up and add anything to this, you know, you're welcome to.
I think I'll talk, I'll be during the next one.
Got the site plan, sure?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't see anyone coming up, so I guess we will close the public hearing at seven oh six. Any questions, statements, motions?
Move to approve the, uh, land use that is described in detail in item six A of our agenda.
One second. You're gonna add anything? Okay, one second.
Any discussion? All right, we'll do the roll call vote. Leanne Kashmarski.
Yes.
Jenny Ferraro.
Yes.
Anthony Cody.
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Okay, that's passed unanimously. And now we will move on to the six B, site plan review. Number zero four, two, three, two, five, dash, one, proposed indoor golf simulator fitness land use on property located in the zone developmental district at four twenty Brickyard Road. The applicant again is Ken Dillinger of U.P. Engineers and Architects, four twenty-four South Pine Street in Ishbaming, on behalf of the property owner, Adam Development, one oh seven Superior View Lane in Nagani. Jason?
Yeah, so we have a fifteen thousand square foot approximately, uh, structure to be located on the property. This will include a golf simulator fitness area and retail space. And, um, we've reviewed this per our staff, or excuse me, our site plan review process. And if you were turned to take page two of the staff report, um, obviously gave you the background there, but eighteen thousand, two hundred square feet. We reviewed it through our consistency with the master plan, which is fine. The compatibility with the development district, you guys just, uh, certified that. And then we go into the site organization here. And you can see that there is a, uh, structure, parking, uh, associated detention area. Proposed driveway and landscaping. The driveway itself will need to be approved by the Marquette County Road Commission. That permit has been submitted but not yet approved. As far as circulation in the parking lot, the fire department noted that there would be a requirement for a T-shaped turnaround. So I'm thinking it probably best suited at the north end of the property at some point, um, when they revise the site plan, if you are in concurrence with staff's recommendation. Of course, the dumpster area will be enclosed per our requirements. I guess notably on the west side of the property, you'll notice that the ten-foot setback is maintained and then there appears to be another ten feet before the building actually starts. What's important about that is that there's an existing tree line there that provides a nice buffer between, um, the commercial land use and the residential land use to the west. It is a pretty thick and robust area and let's see if we can get to the aerial there. Yeah, you can kind of see it on, on, on this side here. So this road is kind of overlapping that tree boundary, but the buffer yard type there would be buffer yard type E. But this is in the excess of that as a natural buffer. So we're pleased to see that that will remain. You can see here that this is the proposed demolition area or site balancing. Really demolition's kind of a, uh, funny word, but, um, obviously the house will be removed. There's another foundation up in this area, I believe, will be removed and then there'll be some site balancing that occurs. So you have the main building at eighty by one forty and then two attached, uh, smaller sections, forty by fifty to the north.
And those aren't part of the golf simulator, those are rentals?
No, no.
No.
Uh, I think one's fitness area and one's a retail component.
So the main building, the eighty by one forty would be split in half and half of the main building would be the golf simulator. The other half is the gymnastics and fitness that we're trying to work with
Oh, okay.
To come with us. So the two additional units on the north would be like retail space.
Okay.
Which may be used for golf retail, one may be used for that and then an additional one.
Okay, great. Stormwater's supposed to be sheet flowed and then conveyed to the east. Uh, there's a, uh, be a proposed ditch line and containment pond. That'll have to obviously go through our stormwater ordinance and review. And then utilities, uh, are one of the things that have not yet been finalized, but obviously, uh, we'll be running water and sewer to the property. And, um, I know DPW is working with the applicant on finalizing the proposed utilities. In my opinion, uh, that, the T-turnaround and the approval of the driveway location, obviously want to separate that driveway as much as possible from that intersection, which they've done a good job of, in my opinion. Those items, uh, are fairly minor in detail. So moving on, let's see. Uh, the fire department also noted that the distance to the closest hydrant for the proposed building will need to be reviewed, uh, once additional information is provided. So that's also proposed condition of approval. And then landscaping has been provided. You can see the existing, uh, tree line there to the west we talked about earlier. And of course, signs, when those come up, those will be approved separately afterward. And any lighting, uh, needs to be full cutoff, downcast, dark sky lighting, especially in that particular property, but that's what we require anyway. So other factors, the applicant will acquire, uh, acquire all Marquette County building permits and a financial guarantee of one percent of the proposed development cost for twenty-eight thousand dollars. She'll be submitted to the township to ensure that any property are maintained and as-built site plan is submitted to the township afterwards. Based on that, staff recommends approval of the proposed site plan contingent on the submittal and approval of items three C, which involves the T-turnaround for the fire department. Three D, which involves, uh, finalizing the stormwater, uh, permit. Three E, utilities, three F, uh, the fire department with regard to the hydrant location. And three I, which is signs, but that can be done separately. And then item four, which is the submittal of the financial guarantee and acquisition of county building permits. And then the facade or the elevations here. I guess it's important to note, you know, this is the location of the property and the building and these are the actual houses that are within proximity. So this one's about five hundred feet as the crow flies and this one up here is around a thou... Well, eight hundred and then there's about, well, a thousand or eleven hundred feet in the distance. Then obviously this one would be even distant at about one thousand feet, so about a quarter mile. What are my elevations to? Oh, I only put them on there once, so I didn't have to do them. So, yeah, this is the proposed building design, which is a, uh, a metal-sided building. However, uh, this one looks really nice in its design and staff does not see an issue. You know, the, the building is longer on the west end, but there are, or there is this architectural break with the, um, day lighting windows along the side. So staff didn't recommend any changes or triggering of our, uh, building design standards. I guess also the nice thing to note is that all of the business, if you will, on this building will occur on the east side, so away from the residences that are on the west. So this is the property as it sits now. This is the building layer and then this is, um...
Okay, Jason? When we did the color, colors it, we actually changed our roof to a shed roof. So it matches like the, the, I emailed that in. So there's a gable roof on that, the, the main building. We're gonna go from the east side, slope back to the west side, just like our other two shorter buildings, smaller spaces.
Okay.
So, so it'll look like the, the blown-up picture in the corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it will follow the same roof line for the whole structure
Yeah.
rather than changing the roof line.
Sleek, okay.
So the door in the middle you see on the east side, that's the gymnastics entrance. And then the front, or which would be the south end of the building facing forty-one, that's where the golf presenter.
Okay.
Two separate entrances, uh, separate parking and getting in and out.
So that concludes the staff report. Uh, Ken Dillinger is the, um, civil or the architect on the project and you can come up and answer any questions additionally that you may have.
Couple of things, working with, uh, Len Bodinas on the utilities. We got a hydrant by the roundabout in the corner there, so we intend to extend that across Brickyard on Andrews property to get our water there. It's gonna require fire suppression, so we'll be bringing in a bigger line than a standard, you know, one or two-inch line. So the plan would also be put a hydrant on that corner just for flushing in the future, flushing that line, 'cause technically we'll be dead-ending that, that building. And then we're working on the, uh, wastewater that right now it's in that parking lot in front of, uh, Pet Smart area. There's a list station there and, you know, we could come out, we'd go down Brickyard and then we'd have to get across. Or we're also looking at evaluating how much, uh, how big of a drain field would be required if we just put a drain field there in that, in the back section of the property. So we got two options on the wastewater, but one or the other will work, so. We got plenty of room for that T-turnaround. Uh, we had a preliminary, uh, review that came through today from the road commission. They wanted a couple of other items tagged under, one of them was the distance from the Brickyard intersection back to the driveway. They wanted that distance labeled on the drawing. And there was, uh, uh, distance from the face of the building, uh, to the road. So the, the odd thing about this property, and I, I worked on when it wasn't gonna be a tractor supply across the street from there, Andrew Owens to the center line of Brickyard. So the road commission actually leases access through there. And the same thing, unless they may have changed, I didn't do the Myers gas station, but when, uh, that, uh, Myers would own to that center line of the Brickyard too. It's, it's an odd piece, they actually own to the center line of forty-one, unless they reached, change that when the Myers bought it, but, so. Uh, we are gonna, uh, make sure we maintain a buffer away from basically the, the top slope, top of the slope of down below the creek, or top of slope we marked out, where we wanna keep a ten-foot, uh, setback off of that slope. That's just as a safety precaution and stuff like that. They don't want anything close to that, so. But we did the hydraulic calculations for the water flow off, uh, parking lots and buildings to size their retention basin and that'll be part of the design submittal.
So there aren't any drains in the parking lot itself, it all drains off?
Yeah, we just, we just sloped it all, yeah.
To the east, I'm assuming?
Yep. And then we'll have a little bit of a, a channel following that whole east side that funnels towards that pond, so. So basically we got two businesses in a big section that are being looked at that they both want to expand their businesses, they're both in locations they can expand. So this is a location to move out to in both businesses and kind of span their operation, so.
Would you ever be, I don't know if that's what you're just talking about, uh, expanding to more further with, like, more retail space?
Uh, we did play around a little bit, but, I mean, it wasn't at this point, you know, but as the, the first phase, you know, get this in.
Right, you could do it.
Yeah, it'd create more parking, you know, we'd have that more parking. And then again, you know, that'd be a reason we'd want to go to the sanitary of the township so that we don't have a drain field back there. So that's part of weighing the costs of, you know, getting the first phase going, so. We're hoping to direct a bore water line from this property over towards where the hydrant is. Get a, and get a, uh, easement to run that line to get to Brickyard.
If you ever do go further north with the building anymore, is there any way you can run a driveway out east across the, what, area?
It's too steep. Yeah, it really drops off there, yeah, yep. Yeah, the creek's down on the bottom of that, so.
You don't want to get into that at all?
No, no.
From a permitting standpoint?
No, no.
You'd have to build a bridge.
That was a special, that was special. Yeah, we could do a nice suspension bridge.
Suspension bridge.
With some old towers, you know?
Yeah.
Be a nice attraction.
Yeah, oh, we're doing, we're doing suspension bridges, it's unbelievable, you know? Stuff like this, just like this, go across between, you know, corporation two buildings, big suspension bridge for employees to walk across. Yeah, there's some pretty good ones we've been on. Yep, building colors will be darker, black and, uh, dark brown, you know, so, uh, all the facial corners.
The metal will be black?
Huh? Yeah, and then, and then dark brown.
Dark gray.
Dark gray.
Yeah, gray and, and black. It's similar to the picture.
Yep.
That, uh, in the bottom corner.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, similar to that.
There are new colors nowadays, I guess, huh?
Mm-hmm, yeah, you can get anything.
How does the, can I ask how the, a golf simulator works? I mean, is it one like big screen?
Yeah.
And, uh, people have like partitions where they're, so they, they're, they're not distracted where they can see where they fake, when they swing and they're fake ball those wherever.
Exactly, a lot of golf simulator businesses have it where it's wide open and you can see everybody swing. We have two bays now, but we're stuck in a thousand square feet, so it's very small. But all of our customers that we've told we're trying to expand, they want us to maintain something more private.
Yeah.
So when, and, and that's how we get a lot of, um, so this is our second season open and we've had nineteen hundred different golfers come in. So I mean, we've hit probably every single person almost at the Marquette Golf Club comes in, including, uh, people on the board, like they've even come around. I think they thought we were competitors at first, but I can tell you with days like today, our business goes down and the driving range open today, so it's their turn, you know, and we don't want to mess with that, but, um, we have a lot of new golfers. I mean, we've, we've had golfers come in like age four and we've also had people come in, um, I think our oldest customer's ninety-two. And it is a big twenty-foot screen, it's private and, uh, the system's able to read your ball, within like, on long shots, about five yards of accuracy. And even putting, it's about plus or minus two or three feet. So, yeah, a lot of people use it, some people come in just to stay loose and as exercise. Um, other people come in for entertainment and most of the time it's kind of a mix. And we're hoping to have about five to six simulators, depending on how we can organize them and, and use the space.
So when you say different simulators, you mean like one for putting, one for driving?
So the same simulator? No, the same simulator is capable of doing, when it comes to putting, you usually get a little cheat circle, like you put a six-foot gimme circle around the hole. So on the simulator, when you putt within that six feet, it, it kind of says, hey, you made it, you go to the next hole. But you can go there in the same system, you can go on the driving range and just practice different shots, different clubs. Or we, right now we have fifty courses, so you can go on there and you can golf fifty different courses and you can golf all eighteen holes. We also have things for kids, so, um, there's like a little circus thing where they can golf and there's like little challenges. And we have a, it's called a multi-sport simulator where kids can play zombie dodgeball, they can kick soccer balls against a goalie, the big one's hockey. Being where we live, every kid loves coming in and you shoot, um, street hockey balls against a goalie. So oftentimes we have the parents rent one for them, they rent another sim for the kids. And then they can both kind of enjoy things they like and we sort of babysit sometimes too. We help the kids with the computer while the parents golf.
So I, I'm assuming that people could come in if they were enjoying, or is there like a membership as well? If you're really into it?
Yeah, so we do offer a membership service. Um, we, we don't take any money from it, it's just basically you kind of prepay for your time and then we give people twenty-five percent off, so it's kind of like a membership subscription. Um, we have a lot of people doing that this year, being our second year. It took us a little while to, for people to come in and try, but this year we did have a lot more memberships than, than, uh, last year. And, um, I, we would, we have people right now that come in every week. They come in a few different groups, they come in every week for four hours. So four guys will come in, rent for four hours. We've got another group, like two couples come in once a week on like Friday nights. So we, we have a lot of people that just have standing reservations right now. Our problem is, is every day we have a waiting list of fifteen people waiting for a cancellation to happen. So that's kind of the reason for our expansion too. A lot of the golfers that are club members locally also are very interested in having leagues during the winter. I think they're dying for that golf competition. So I think this year we had about seventy people request that we start a league. But with only two simulators, we would be like a private club, we wouldn't be able to offer any time to like, you know, just your average person that wants to come once a month. So we didn't hold any leagues this year, but that's our goal when we can open a larger facility.
So the new facility will have, will have how many simulators?
At least five, we're hoping to possibly get to six.
And then the area that, right now you're attracting, how far away?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're getting customers who come weekly from Munising. We get, uh, customers who'll come once a month from Houghton. They'll actually stay in the Holiday Inn, they'll come, they'll golf at night, they'll go... I, I mean, they come to Marquette to do some shopping and things and then the next morning they'll have an appointment before they drive back. There is a simulator in the casino in Baraga, but how they run theirs, I think, is just a little different. So we have people coming from Baraga, even though there's one right there, that are still coming to us. I don't know, I'd like to think we're doing, uh, well with our customer service 'cause I really think that's all it takes, but, um, I mean, even Iron Mountain, people are driving from Iron Mountain, Esconaba, they're asking us to open places in Esconaba and Menominee, we can't go that fast, we gotta do one thing at a time.
So it's really pulling in more people, you know, in a different category than, you know, the retail stuff that's here now, we got another item that could bring more people, so. Yeah, the closest one's Green Bay, right, that is, will be similar to this?
Yeah, yeah, like the
South of Green Bay.
The casino in Barra kind of added them as an attraction. I think other places, uh, nine oh six, uh, they had one, um, sports bar, they, but they just put it in during the week when they were slow. So we're kind of the first place to like focus on just the golf part. And, yeah, we're gonna offer some food and, you know, snacks and things like that, but we just focus on the golf and we're really pulling in a lot of golfers from, in the area. And, yeah, the, probably the nearest one, um, Appleton, the, one gentleman I work with a little bit, he owns Appleton and Green Bay Indoor Golf. And down there they have some of the franchises too, which, um, ExGolf is a larger franchise. I did have a few meetings with them. Unfortunately, they won't support us up here because our population and our average household income, they say, is too low, so, um, that, that's fine. We just said we'll do it ourselves instead of going that route.
Wonderful.
Any other questions for me?
I have some questions for the tall guy there. You mentioned that you're...
You mentioned that you're, you want to hook up to the sanitary sewer that is, where your hookup would be, would be by, uh, did you say Petsmart?
Yeah, so between Burger King and Petsmart, it's actually just across the street from Burger King on that road. There's an island right there, there's a generator and there's a pump station and everything right there.
Okay.
That's the closest that, uh, but it's, right now, it's like a private area.
So you just dig up the road?
Direct or bore, we can, we can be pressurized at our facility so that we, you know, we can direct or bore it to get there. A couple, you know, sections we gotta open up and then direct or bore.
Sure.
And we'd be looking at, yeah. Similar to a lot of the township right now, they got the environment one, pump stations for different areas. We'd be doing the same thing, because the township actually maintains it.
Okay.
Once it's put in an operational.
Okay.
So they have replacement pumps and everything, so.
Mm-hmm, and are you, what's your level of confidence that you're gonna be able to get that done?
Well, we'd be able to get that done, and so, you know, you could say a cheaper alternative could be is if it works calc solid, is how my, how big of a drain field you need? Based on the occupant load of the building, the type of use, number of toilets, number of showers, you know, that, that kind of thing dictates your size of drain field. So if we don't have enough space for that, then we have to do it. You know, we don't have a choice.
So are you, so when you say drain field, you're talking about a septic system?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and that would be?
That'd be permitted through the county.
That would be, uh?
On the north.
Up here?
North, yep, yep.
Okay.
So everything from the building was, you know, basically we gravity down to the outside of the building, and then we probably have a small pump station, we pressurize up to the drain field.
Okay, but that's only gonna be if you don't get the hookup to, uh?
Yeah, to the parking lot over there.
To the parking lot, otherwise, you, you, and you're fairly confident you're gonna get that?
Yeah, I talked to Lynn, Lynn about it, and, you know, it's a, it's a private piece of property that that's sitting on. So we gotta get an easement to get our line onto that property.
So that would, that would avoid the need for a septic field to the north of the property?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so if we don't get that easement, we have option B.
Okay.
Because without the, you know, septic system, we can't open.
Right. Um, okay, uh, then, uh, uh, my next question would be regarding your containment pond. I see that, um, there's an overflow, uh, designation.
Yeah, so it'll flow off that northeast corner, and then it'll be swaled so that it'll go down into the creek, basically, is, is where our, you know?
Okay.
Flow out will be, so the, the pond's big enough to hold water, but we get, you know, fifty-year rain or something like that, be our overflow.
Okay.
So, and then your, your opening is small enough that you, you call it, you meter it, so that, you know, it's not a big gush, it's, it's same thing you do if you gotta go into a M dot ditch or anything, typically you size about the flow of a four-inch pipe.
Okay.
Is how you size your pond.
So if it's draining off of your parking lot, that would mean it would perhaps contain some kind of petrochemicals and so forth?
Yeah, uh, if it's salt and stuff like that, you know, if they're, they're salt in the parking lot, yep.
Is there a concern, uh, is there any regulations that, that would impact you in terms of what kind of discharge you can make into the creek of that type of discharge?
It'd be nothing different than the products that they use down the streets, you know, down along, you know, salting the streets and roads, you know, M dot or the county.
Okay.
Our stormwater ordinance is what they would be aiming for compliance with.
I see, okay, all right. And then I, from when the gentleman was here last year, when we, when we rezoned this, uh, I, I remember that there were some wetlands areas in this.
Yeah, that, that's in that lower section down there. So there is no wetlands in that area that we are developing, in that shaded area that we showed, that drying.
Yeah, you can see that the creek is right here, so.
Yeah.
Right.
That's the wetland.
Yep.
Right.
So we're staying, we're up on top the hill?
Right, you're on the other side.
Yeah, we're right to the left of that, really. Jason, if you pull up that one that has that gray hatchet area where we're gonna disturb, right there. So, so all the hatched area, that's up on top of, you know, I'm gonna call it a plateau up there, un, of, above the creek.
Right, so, uh, when you were talking, when we were talking about the containment pond and the overflow and a swell, that swell would then go down over Brick, uh, Brickard Road?
Not over Brickard Road, it'll go over the edge of the hill that goes down to that creek. So we'll rip wrap that, uh, prevent erosion, that area will be rip wrapped.
Okay.
Yep.
And I see from several of these documents that there's, uh, a conservation easement that extends from the east to the north on the, I can't tell, is it, uh, it looks like it's on both sides of Brickyard Road. Do you know who owns that conservation easement?
What document is that one on?
Um, C one oh two.
Okay. We're gonna go back to that.
Yeah, C one oh two.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yep, and then there's one down to the east and south.
Yeah, I don't know who retained it, retained that, because I mean, originally, that was all Lindbergh's property, so I think Lindbergh might still own that.
Lindbergh does own it.
Yeah.
The conservation.
He did the, the creek, yep.
When Lowe's and Shops of Marquette was put in, the creek was realigned, this major culvert was put in and, um, the road was realigned.
Okay.
So that's all.
Yeah, and we were part of that design when that was all done and permitted.
Okay. And is there any concern on, uh, it's been expressed on any adverse impact to the wetland area?
No, we will not have any impact on the wetlands.
Okay.
Yeah, we're technically quite away from that boundary. Because it, just being up on the hill and then the slope and then we're gonna basically leave a ten-foot buffer before, you know, it drops off, so that that wild vegetation, I said it right now, natural vegetation will stay in that area, too.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Anything else?
Anyone else?
Thank you.
One question for Jason, uh, you know, we don't need any vertical breaks in this? I can't remember what the, um, amount of footage was where you need vertical breaks in there.
It's one fifty, but there weren't, it, it's not specific to vertical breaks, it's specific to a myriad of things, it could be a different paint color, it could be landscaping, it could be a number of things, so in my opinion, the windows on top and bottom broke that architectural plane up.
Oh, hey, one more question, when do you expect to do your, uh?
Oh, we gotta get through this step first.
Well, I know, I mean, suppose.
We are soliciting contractors right now that do preacher steel buildings, as far as delivery time of materials and stuff, I, I guess, he could talk about what he'd like to open.
Yeah, so obviously, we haven't done too much of the specific design work, we obviously wanted to see how this meeting would go. Um, we are working with the, the, um, the woman who owns the gymnastics facility, um, so she's got a partner, so we're gonna touch base with her and see exactly how her space needs to be built, but I think we think, once we get the exterior design, um, and shape and everything just finalized, which, I mean, the shape is, but we just need confirmation from them, I think we're thinking eight weeks at least to order steel.
Yep, we're told today, eight weeks to get steel on site.
However, we need, um, obviously, we can't do anything till road restrictions come off, since I think Brickyard Road is weight restricted. So it's not like we would even be able to start tearing the house down until second week of June. So we could do a lot of land and site prep and get a foundation put in while we're waiting for steel. Um, I believe the gymnastics company and dance company, they, they're eager, um, to, to make a move probably during the summer, since competitions are usually during school, so a little easier for them to move classes around and kind of work both.
So you think you'd be, people will be golfing by Thanksgiving?
I need to hope, I need to hope for that, yeah. Our, our goal, um, we really start getting busy about Thanksgiving. Um, the golf courses kind of close around Halloween, and then everyone goes into hunting mode. So like, when deer season kind of ends and everyone has Thanksgiving, everyone's ready to golf again, so that's our prime time that we would like to open. But I'd like the building to be in place for, um, our, I mean, she's gonna be a tenant for me, but she's more of a partner. Um, I'd like her to be able to get in, um, you know, as soon as she can. So she might be the first one actually operating there while we're inside doing the interior build out of ours.
Right.
She needs basically an open space, um, with locker rooms and a dance room. So the interior build out for her is, is fairly quick and easy, um, whereas ours is gonna be a little, a little more detailed. Um, the simulators require us to make sure things are, they have to be at a certain height, um, lighting, we have to have certain lighting to make sure that the ball can get, be read properly and, and the projectors and, and the internet required for each one, so ours will take a little bit more time.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll get through the total interior design components, and that's gotta go to the county for permitting, for building and mechanical, plumbing, electrical. And once those are all obtained, some plan review, then permits could be pulled and, or constructed.
You never had any thoughts on putting like a mini driving range in there?
That's, uh, everyone has asked me to, everyone wants me to have the simulator base, sometimes they'll put a garage door in front, so like, in the winter, the garage doors closed and you're hitting into a screen, but on days like today, you open up that garage door, lift the screen up, and you let people hit to the outside. It's, it's just a hard thing to do, we don't have the space there. And I'll be honest, I, when I polled our customers, they don't want to drive that far out of town to a property. Like I said, are you gonna come every single week if you've gotta drive five, ten miles out of town? And they were like, no. So future plans, which would all have to probably go for approval, too, is on that north side of the property, if that remains open, we were thinking about a mini golf course. Uh, so no, possibly no additional buildings or anything, but leaving it open to possibly have, uh, miniature golf, since we're not as busy in the summer uh, with the indoor golf, um, but that's, you know, that's kind of just a future thing, we thought we would have enough property to do that with. Obviously, pending if we need to put a septic field there, that can't happen, that's really why we're leaving it open, is just in case we do have to go the septic route.
Are we done?
I'm good.
Are, are we doing a motion for all this done and?
Oh, yeah, it's a site plan.
Have the, right, but I mean, as far as the?
Yeah, so appreciate a motion with the, uh, contingencies listed in item, uh, six B.
I motion that we approve the site plan for that simulator, uh, business, um, that the staff recommended, um, proposed, okay, so let me just, I'll say that again, I motion that we approve the site plan contingent on the submission of approval of items three C, three D, three E, three F, three I, and four, as noted in the Planning Commission's staff report dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Can we second it, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and on behalf of the township, thank you for your investment, and, uh, we look forward to an exciting new opportunity here in the community.
Thank you very much for your consideration, we appreciate it.
The ground running. We're swinging.
Yeah, swinging. We better go right now, thank you.
Get that steel ordered.
I know, thank you very much.
Six C, special use permit, public hearing request. Both short-term rental and used to be located on a property within the urban residential district. Tax ID is five two zero eight three five zero zero five nine zero zero. Yep, this Thomas Fountain, twenty-one eighty-three Cherry Street in Marquette. Jason?
Yes, we haven't seen, uh, one of these in a while, which is, I don't know if it's a good or bad thing, but we still allow, uh, short-term rentals in the community by way of a special use permit, so, uh, Mr. Fountain did submit a complete application, uh, Eric tendered this one, and uh, all the additional information is provided in the packet, along with a, um, proposed narrative or a letter to you guys. And, yeah, we're just looking to schedule the public hearing and get this on the agenda for, uh, Wednesday, May fourteenth at seven P M. Provided a motion is passed.
Looks like.
Any questions on this one?
It looks like this is in his backyard, this is, yeah, so. Seemed pretty straightforward.
I think we had a couple in that area, short-term rentals.
Yeah, we'll provide you a, the public hearing with a copy of the map.
Right.
Density there.
No, there was one on Cherry Street.
It's a double lot, um, yeah, it's, it's a larger lot.
Well, I don't have any questions, pretty straightforward. Any questions or motions from anyone?
Move to, uh, schedule a, uh, public hearing on this special use permit for proposed short-term rental as stated in item six C.
One second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay.
Thank you.
There you go. Seven A, unfinished business, the master plan update.
Yeah, I left here, this on here as a placeholder, I did send an email off to S E H today asking them for an update on, uh, Lori, uh, which is one of our consultants that we're working with, so hope to hear back from that soon and have an update for you regarding the master plan in May. Um, I just had my employee review, and one of my goals, uh, is to have the master plan updated by, uh, the end of the year, so provided that happens, we should be in good shape, um, and looking forward to getting back into that project.
Correspondence, A, Michigan Association of Planning Upper Peninsula Academy on May fourteenth.
So the, all the planning commission members are signed up for that now, uh, we will send you confirmation, uh, once we receive an email back from, uh, MAP. And then, uh, eight B, essentially, uh, the Nevada team has, I guess countered with their purchase agreement, if you will, and there's a proposal to reduce the number of workforce housing level homes, um, and that drastically reduces, along with a couple other, uh, items, drastically reduces the amount of time with the TIF. I think it was proposed to be twenty-four years initially, and this brings it down to ten. So one of the things I need to do, and this is just, I'll, I'll update you again on, uh, May fourteenth, but I need to go through the proposed minutes, which I've done. There was no specific number of workforce units in the motion to approve the P U D site plan. It was more or less, um, you know, here's what the plan looks like, and, um, and you guys approved it. So that's not a, in my opinion, I guess, a categorical change. There's a, there's provision in the P U D language that allows for changes that I can review and approve. So what I want to do is go through those and make sure that it doesn't trigger the requirement for them to resubmit the P U D, which we're hoping it doesn't, because that just delays everything and really pushes off their potential time to purchase the property. Um, so staffs received it, the board was made aware of it, and now the planning commission knows about it, and I did include that in the, uh, proposal. So I'm happy to try to entertain any questions about it, but given other work in the last couple of weeks, I really haven't had a chance to drill into that yet, but I do intend on doing that towards the end of this week.
I don't know, I guess my thought is it, it kind of is good for the township, but bad for housing. Even though you're gaining fourteen years of taxes on it. You know, I don't know if anybody did any, any figures on that yet. You know, how much that comes out to. I guess it's kind of too bad in a way that that has to happen. What do the rest of you think?
Well, there should still be thirteen of them, right?
How many was there originally?
There was no number.
Well, let me just, pardon me, remember, uh, I, I had email exchanges with Jill Ferrari asking her how many of these units are gonna be under this price point? And she responded quite quickly, uh, that forty of them were going to be under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year.
But she never said they were workforce.
No, but that's affordable housing, whether you call them workforce or not. There was, as I recall, there was a, a, a certain number, uh, I can't remember what it was now, a smaller number that was gonna even be cheaper. And perhaps that was the, the, the lower median income range. I can't remember. But, I mean, if we could get some idea from her, and I don't think it, you know, would be too hard. I mean, they're pretty snappy, you know, with their, their information figure. What would be the price range of the thirteen? And what, other than the, the big, the big units that never, that were gonna be like three hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty? And that was like eight of them. So I guess, let's see, eight and thirteen is twenty-one. So you got another twenty-seven that we don't know that, she says they'll still be lower than market. So if you can just ask her, what are those, you know, that would be helpful for the planning commission to know. But if, if they're still, you know, if they're still under, uh, under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, I mean, that's pretty much attainable, affordable housing.
Is there?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'll have those, uh, that data for you on the fourteen.
Okay.
So is, the reason she doing this, is she thinking that the twenty-four-year TIF isn't gonna go? So she wants to change it so that it'll be passed by the board?
Well, it, it, in reading the email, it's, it appeared to be unsatisfactory, not only with the county, but also with, I would assume, the township board. Um, so it's their effort, um, to mix things up to make the numbers work.
Well, Andrew was all okay with twenty-four years. Yeah, but I attended a couple of the township meetings and it looks like the votes weren't there to do a twenty-four-year TIF. So I think that, I mean, my assumption, that's why she changed this because she saw the writing on the wall. She wasn't gonna get a twenty-four-year TIF.
Yeah, there's also a provision there that they're proposing that would not require them to purchase the property.
If, if they don't.
If the P U D doesn't go through.
Yeah, which is pretty standard in any kind of country.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just to clarify those issues.
If you bought a house, you know, you got that escape plus in your country.
So, yeah, just correspondence for now and I'll provide you with additional detail once I, uh, go through with the fine tooth of comb.
Right, I think if the, the township passes, passes it with the twenty-four-year TIF, uh, county can't opt out of that. So they have to go along with it, right? So I guess it's all up to the township whether it's twenty-four years, doesn't, doesn't have anything to do with the county.
Right. That was my understanding too. Because Andrew, with the brownfield, said twenty-four years is what I want. I was, I was there at the meeting. She said, that's what I want. So apparently it's not an issue of the county.
Yeah, I, I misspoke there. It was more of an issue with the board. And I think ten, you know, is really better for everybody if, if it works out.
Okay. Nine A, township board report. Linda's not here.
Yeah, we'll get you caught up on that one, uh, next meeting.
Okay. Recreations committee report.
They have not met in some time. And again, waiting for master plan, uh, materials to sit them down and have them go through it. So hopefully in May, we'll be able to have a rec committee meeting.
I mean, and zoning.
Oh, boy, we got lots of stuff going on. Uh, it's that time of year where things are really kicking off. So I guess, um, we did approve a demo, maybe last time, maybe not, uh, essentially for the, um, Bruce Pasola property, which is Jasmine Restaurant, all the way over to the former Queen City. And just working through a number of things right now. Uh, there will be a groundbreaking ceremony for the, uh, Veterans Home in May. Hopefully you get to attend and yeah, I didn't even make a list because there's just so much. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just kind of had some housekeeping questions. I'll just bring up an answer. Wait until the end. The road there behind, um, going to, uh, who will? If they can just throw some stuff in there.
We can talk to Lenny tomorrow, see what we can do.
I kind of assume you're just waiting for her to see what's gonna happen.
He needs a load of gravel on him.
Where's this suburb been? And, um, there was quite a few of these, um, political business signs. Awesome. You know, they, they look like little political signs, but they're just the things you stick in the ground.
Yeah.
And it just seems like there are more and more of them. I didn't know if you could have whoever's doing, you know, that summer job.
Yep.
Kind of like.
Pick them up.
I don't know if, you know, what I.
Yeah, they can't be located, uh, in the right of way from my understanding. So, yeah, we'll, we'll address that as the weather starts to get nicer. That's one thing we've been working on is, uh, a job description for the L T E position. And we put together one from the zoning side and then we pass it off to assessing because they would also be able to do some assessing work, um, and up, maybe not up the hours, but just fill the time. So we're hoping to get that to the manager and H R here, uh, hopefully by the end of the week. And get it advertised.
And then the last thing I had was, I hate to bring it up again, but nine oh-six. I mean, they, uh, junk every road there.
Okay.
They just don't have the room and their, that lot's just too small for them and.
Were they not purchased?
Really their problem. I mean, that's all, but.
Were they recently purchased? Oh, six technologies?
Well, their, their utility was, their, the utility part of them was.
Highline, so, all right, I'll get ahold of them too.
I don't know if you noticed, but they did build those enclosures for the dumpsters. But the enclosures are too small for the dumpsters. They can't put them in there.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, those things.
Over on the side of the building and, I mean, you know, they've got garbage and just stuff stored, stored outside and. I'm on a business, I have a business, but.
Yeah, I'll go over there. I'll get on it tomorrow. I haven't been over to the area in a while.
And any other questions for Jason with any of this? I need Tony? Okay. Any announcements?
Yes, uh, you've probably received an email from Citizens from Safe and Clean Lake Superior, which is a nonprofit here in Marquette County on, on the board. Anyway, our director has sent out, uh, has arranged a luncheon at the Barrel and Beam on, I know everybody's busy, but it's gonna be from eleven-thirty to one-thirty on Mar, on May twenty-first. Brad Newman, who you all know, is gonna be a presenter. And also, uh, Professor Chimner from Michigan Tech University will be there. And the topic we'll generally focus on, and I have not, the director is organizing all these things, but, uh, the, the general topic will be what ways can township governments, and there'll be other planning commissioners and planning zoning people from other townships, what way can, um, municipalities, uh, help better protect wetlands? And we know that, you know, just, here's a little brochure. It's not about the meeting, but it's about the loss of wetlands that we've had in, you pass it. In Marquette County, uh, and the Amada wetlands have been lost. They're pretty staggering. Of course, Eagle does, does have a protection for wetlands that are greater than five acres or within a thousand feet of the lake. But, um, other wetlands that don't fall in that category are often infilled. And, uh, these are very important, uh, natural features, not only for filtration of water, but prevention of erosion, habitat for game fish, other game, even moose love wetlands. So anyways, it's, uh, and, uh, it is an important thing and we, uh, we'd like to, uh, see if maybe we can, maybe tweak a few things just to have some better protections for wetlands. So free lunch. It's gonna be catered. And, uh, I imagine for those who take a cocktail in the afternoon, the bar would probably be open too, so.
What was the date on that again?
Uh, May twenty-first, eleven-thirty to, uh, one-thirty.
A week after, um, N M U Academy thing.
Yeah.
And that's at Barrel and Beam?
Yeah, Barrel and Beam, yeah. There might be a, a little flyer that might, you might, might appear in your mailbox with a little more description of the program sometime, uh, between now and then. But if you can make it, it'd be, might be a nice little get-together.
And I guess as long as you're here, I kind of, I always kind of wondered about this with being against the, uh, all the mines, you know, the Tilden expansion and then the, uh, mine out in, on Tenon, wherever it is. I guess I just wanted to try and understand it, you know, what, what is it that isn't good about those mines opening?
Uh, the, the Tilden issue is, you know, it's, uh, Cleveland Cliffs who stiffed the county out of fifty million dollars in tax revenue and cost the county another million dollars in legal fees until they were publicly shamed into making a deal. Uh, so they're not exactly the upstanding citizen that everybody likes to think they are. But they, uh, they've already filled in a thousand acres of wetlands. And last year they wanted to fill in another seventy-seven plus, uh, fill in a, infill a, a riparian area there, a stream. So, uh, it just seems like they do whatever they want. Now, they were opposed last year and so they withdrew that permit to do seventy-seven. And, uh, now they're coming back with, uh, a reduced, uh, request for infilling of thirty-seven acres of wetlands. So that's basically, uh, why our group has participated in organizing public comment against that infill of wetlands.
Just because of the government issue then?
Yeah, yeah, that's the main thing. Uh, as far as the Porky's, uh, you know, I'm not that involved in that, but my understanding is, is that they're gonna build a huge tailing pond within a thousand feet of the lakes. And it's by gravity, if anything would ever break, it would go right into the lake. So it's, that's the issue with, there's a group up there that's, uh, Protect the Porky's. It's really spearheading that. But, uh, of course, we could get into talking about sulfide mining and the different things, you know, that are bad about it in terms of mercury increase. You can't eat so many fish because of the mercury poisoning that happens. But I, I don't want to get into all that, you know. I'm just concerned about, you know, in our area, we, wetlands do so many good things for people and people like to fish, people like to hunt, people like to drink clean water out of their wells, people who, like where I'm at, the wetlands that are on my property prevent, they catch all the runoff from the highland and let it soak down and seep through the sandstone into the lake and, you know, filter it and prevent erosion. So there's a lot of good things about wetlands that I think that have been overlooked and just nothing, I don't think Brad and, um, Professor Chimner are gonna suggest anything drastic in terms of, you know, uh, changes in the ordinance, but perhaps just some tweaking, maybe some buffer zones or so forth that could easily be inserted wouldn't be, uh, adverse to development. It would just be a more of a balance between development and preserving what we have up here, you know. That's kind of my spiel on it, but. But it's free lunch. I'd hope to see you there, Jim.
For the info.
Okay.
All right, any more public comment? Okay, no public comment. Any more comments by planning commissioners? You know, from the end? Anything? And I already asked mine, so I guess we're good. You're adjourned.
Thank you.
Eight oh-seven.